I call this meeting of the Upsher County Commission to order. We will begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I point the attention to the United States of America and to the Republic and for which it stands, one nation under God, and with the love of liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. It is a good morning today compared to something we had in the past. And it's strawberry festival time. We have a week of, not quite a week, a few more days of celebrations. We're late on Saturday, and I'm looking forward to the day to go in down, hoping the food court is open, so I can get one of those sausage sandwiches that they only bring in out once a year. But we'll begin by tacky reading the minutes from our last two meetings.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jackie.
The county commission, this is for the joint meeting of the Upsher County Commission of Buchanan City Council on April 30. The county commission of Upsher County, West Virginia, and the Buchanan City Council held a joint meeting at the Upsher County Circuit Court on Thursday, February 2015 at 7:00 p.m. There were present J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner Troy Brady, Commissioner Terry Cutright, Commissioner, City Council members Mayor Rick Edwards, Ron Pewter, and Kevary, Robin Silmes, and David Thomas, and County Administrator Mary Wallace, Assistant Administrator Captain Perry, Jacqueline Digwater, Secretary. J.C. Rafferty called the meeting to order. The meeting will begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Rick Edwards introduced members of the Tri-Grace Conference, Dr. Joseph Reed, Joyce Harris Thacker, our Director, and Judith Wombley, Board of Education, Student Advisor, who provided background information on the conference and the students' project. The Buchanan Upsher High School Student Council members Preston Service, McKenna Polling, Thomas Cottell III, Caitlin Crichfield, and Lily Hicks appeared before the commission and city council and presented the Upsher County Recreational Center project. The students reviewed the benefits that the recreational centers would have for Upsher County. In addition to providing something for teens to do, the complex would be a place for all members of the community. The complex would have the potential to increase home values, provide jobs, increase municipal revenues, and provide athletic opportunities outside of school. Mr. Surface prepared a PowerPoint review with information about the proposed recreational complex. Tom Cottell reviewed the mock blueprint of the post built in which highlighted on the lower floors several sports courts, indoor pool, locker rooms, lounge slash arcade room, and indoor track and field. The upper fourth floor proposal for academic purposes would contain a library room slash study area, conference rooms, computer slash media areas, and lounge area. Ms. Crichfield reviewed possible funding sources, which include renewable grants, bond loans, tax increase, leasing fees, and donations. Ms. Polling and Ms. Hicks acknowledged some of the challenges involved with launching such an ambitious undertaking and reviewed how they started the project by conducting extensive surveys, which involved all Upsher County schools, with the inclusion of elementary students as well as middle and high school students. City Council and commission members discussed some of the challenges that may be incurred and pointed out that the ground rate and goal for the spring of 2016 was very ambitious and probably unattainable. However, they commended the students for their ideas and excellent presentation. Each member of the city council and commission commented that the students did an excellent job, both with their ideas and their presentation, and stated that the project was an achievable goal for the future. After audience comments and questions, Mayor Edwards presented the students with a certificate of appreciation. At 8:15 p.m., with no further business, on motion by Ron Pew, seconded by Robin Silmes, the meeting of Buchanan City Council was adjourned. With no further business, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the meeting of the Upsher County Commission was adjourned.
Thank you, Jackie.
Upsher County Commission meeting, May 7, 2015. County Commission of Upsher County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse limits on Thursday, May 7, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called the meeting to order. Here were present J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner Terry Cutright, Commissioner Terry Wallace, County Administrator, Captain Perry, Assistant County Administrator, and Jacqueline Digwater, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes, on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of April 30, 2015, as submitted. After discussion, on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the advertisement slash job posting for the position of part-time Deputy Director of Emergency Management at the rate of $11 per hour. Applications will be accepted until the position is filled. After discussion, on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the advertisement for the request for bids for a telecommunications system. A mandatory pre-bid conference will be conducted on May 13, 2015, at 9:00 p.m. All sealed bids must be received no later than 9:00 a.m. on May 28, 2015. Terry Wallace advised that the current fund system is now at maximum capacity. With the addition of new employees, the system requires expansion and updating. After discussion, on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the employment of Matthew Hull as part-time seasonal groundskeeping staff at the rate of $8 per hour, recommended by Secretary Truus, Director of Facilities Operations. Mr. Hull will work approximately 19.5 hours per week, effective May 10, 2015. After discussion, on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the employment of part-time seasonal Buchanan Upsher recreational park staff members with pay rates as follows. Lifeguards, life swin lessons, Mackenzie T. Bosley, $8 per hour, Mackenzie Polling, $8.40 per hour, Daniel Bellamy, $8 per hour, Matthew Bellamy, $8.40 per hour, Patricia Lockney, $8 per hour, Shannon Smith, $8.40 per hour, Logan Warner, $8.75 per hour, Jordan Thomas, $8.10 per hour. Lifeguards, swin lessons, admissions, Stephen Wilson, $8.40 per hour. Lifeguards, lifeguards, Madeline Nanners, $8 per hour, Andrew Recking, $8 per hour, Noah Loder, $8.70 per hour, Caitlin Crichfield, $8 per hour, and admissions, Caitlin, $8.80 per hour, and Kylie Costner, $8 per hour. Effective date of employment for all is May 22, 2015. J.C. Rafferty reviewed correspondence from Upsher County resident Mabel Casco concerning culver and road bank issues on Route 20 South, which she considers to be dangerous road hazard. Mr. Rafferty advised that although the Upsher County Commission does not have authority to deal with the road issues, they will request action from the Department of Highways requesting Terry Wallace or Captain Perry to follow up with the deal. H. Mr. Rafferty commanded Ms. Casco to address her concerns. Mr. Rafferty reviewed correspondence from Michael Livesay concerning his resignation from the Buchanan Upsher Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. After discussion, on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the resignation. Mr. Rafferty reviewed correspondence from West Virginia Strawberry Festival President and Executive Director Shirley in the U-Bank, requesting a donation of $2,000 for the 2015 Strawberry Festival and use of the Courthouse Plaza on Saturday, May 9, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for opening ceremonies, and on Tuesday, May 12, at 5:00 p.m. through the conclusion of the festival on Sunday, May 17. After discussion, on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the donation to the 2015 Strawberry Festival in amount of $4,500, as was authorized during the 2014 budget sessions for fiscal year 2015 and for the General Consent Group authorized the court payout dosage. Mr. Rafferty advised that the 2016 fiscal year budget includes a $2,000 donation to the 2016 Strawberry Festival. After discussion, on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved a request from Jennifer Bennett, the National Squid Club President, for use of the Buchanan Upsher recreational park pool for the 2015 season for swim practice from 9:30 a.m. to 11:45 a.m. Monday through Friday. The $300 fee has been waived as requested. Terry Wallace reviewed correspondence from Tommy Plato, West Virginia Development Office, concerning Community Participation Grant Number 15L-E-D-A-0153, in the amount of $10,000 for the benefit to the Upsher County U-P-M. After discussion, on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the grant contract and related documents. J.C. Rafferty acknowledged the efforts of Senator Clark Barnes in obtaining the grant, which will be used for renovations. After discussion, on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign correspondence to the West Virginia Bureau of Behavioral Health and Health Facilities in support of a grant application on behalf of the Opportunity House Incorporated. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, invitation to a dinner to honor mentor teachers of BU High School and BU Middle School. The dinner will be held at the West Virginia Wesleyan Social Hall on May 12, 2015, at 4:30 p.m. Number two, James W. Curry calendar events, May 2015. Three, Upsher County Family Resource Network newsletter, May 2015. Four, Upsher County Family Resource Network Director's Report, May 2015. Five, agendas and our notice of meetings as listed. Six, meeting minutes as listed. Seven, meetings as listed. And eight, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved all settlements as listed. The commission approved the calling and ordering arrangements and/or refunds as listed. The commission approves the following request of ten meetings as listed. Jennifer Bennett, Addressing a M.A. Coordinator, appeared before the commission, W.U.D.A. Roadman, a Westmore County resident, Vernon Polling. After discussion, the commission took no action to approve the request, as it does not meet the guidelines for Upsher County E911, Addressing a M.A. Coordinator. The commission recesses 11:30, 7:00 a.m. The commission reconvened at 1:30 p.m. at the Office of Emergency Management. Representatives of the Federal Emergency Management Agency, representatives, conducted a site visit of the facility. Without further business, on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the meeting adjourned at 3:15 p.m.
Thank you, Jackie. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of April 30 of 2015 or May 7 of 2015 as read? If you might have requested motion of three minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All favor say aye. Aye. Those same signed motion, ayes. We have a 9:15 appointment today, Mr. Robert C. Orndorff Jr., Senior Policy Advisor, State and Local Affairs, West Virginia of Dominion Resources Services Incorporated, regarding the proposed Atlantic Coast Pipeline. It is now 9:20. Mr. Orndorff, I'm glad you're here, appear, and we're five minutes away into your time, so please make your presentation.
Thank you, commissioners, and I'll try to make it quick so we can get out there and get those sausage sandwiches.
Yeah, hopefully today.
First of all, I think I owe you an apology. I promised to be here sooner than this. We've been very busy doing a number of things, and what I'd like to do today is bring you an update on where we are with the project. With me, I have three individuals I want to introduce as well. Mr. Bennett Hardisty, who on this project is working as a special advisor and was formerly President of Dominion Exploration and Production, has 30-plus years of experience in the industry. Greg Park, who's the manager of construction on the project. Greg and I have done a number of these projects over the years. He's actually going to be out on the pipeline, the project itself, building the pipeline. Greg is from Lewis County. Brittany Moody, who is the manager of engineering for the project, is actually a resident of Buchanan. So we have a great crew that we have and all the expertise to answer any questions that you have today. Where are we on the project? This past week, we filed responses to the FERC scoping meeting and open houses we've had. There were almost 30,000 comments that we responded to in the form of a written response that we sent to FERC. Those are available on the FERC webpage. I wouldn't worry you by going over those in detail, but I know you have a number of questions today, and all those questions are answered in those FERC comments, and we'll be glad to answer specific questions that you had related to issues associated with Upsher County. This week, or next week, we will be filing our resource reports, which is a process that we have to go through through FERC that goes into a lot of detail on river crossings, environmental issues, historical issues, the business need for the project. Those will be filed at FERC next week. Once they are available, I'll make sure that your county administrator has access to the web locations for those numbers. You will also get, you continue to get mailings from us as a result if we have identified a stakeholder. You will get a mailing notifying you that those resource reports have been submitted. I believe, and that's where we are in the project. FERC will start analyzing the information that we provided them, synthesize the data, ask additional questions. We respond to questions on a daily basis from FERC. At some point in time, we will submit our environmental submission. FERC will analyze that. We will have an official application. We officially really haven't applied for this project yet, but there's a lot of process that you go through. It's like running a marathon. We're still starting, we're still training. That marathon will actually begin in October when we make official application. Then FERC will again have a series of open house meetings along the pipeline corridor and move forward with the project. So that's where we are right now. We're here to answer any questions that you have, and I think your county administrator gave me a list of those as we walked in, so.
Yes, we've had the parents by members of the community and certain organizations have taken an opposition to construction of the pipeline. There have been certain issues with the county commission as well as other governmental bodies. And from those meetings that we've had in the commission, we've asked our administrator to prepare a series of questions that the public has asked relative to the concerns of safety and environmental issues as well. So at this point, I'll let Ms. Wallace address those questions to you and your staff, and hopefully that will lead us some dialogue.
Just as a comment also, in terms of the comments that we received, well over 30,000, 80% of the comments that we received during the scoping period and FERC comment period were positive in nature. About 17 were in opposition, and four, and the rest were basically asking questions that we couldn't determine whether it's a positive or negative response, so.
Mr. Orndorff, did you receive a letter that was submitted to the Honorable Kimberly Devoe with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission dated April 23rd? It came from the mayor of Buchanan, addressing specific concerns relative to water source here for Upsher County residents?
Yes, yes.
In your recent filing, was a response included to this letter?
I'll let Greg or Brittany answer that question.
Was that a scaping comment question, I was saying?
Yeah, the city of Buchanan raised issue in terms of how we will cross the Buchanan River and the potential impact that the city intakes.
Yes. If it was filed through the e-commence on the FERC system, then we have just recently prepared answers to the specific questions and also those, and are providing responses.
Can we get a response to the specific questions while you're here relative to the city's concerns?
Ask away. Let's see what we can do. We don't have all of our people with us, but we might be able to address some of them at least.
Okay. The letter mentions that, of course, the Atlantic Coast Pipeline is proposed across the Buchanan River and also eight other streams within the county that eventually also meet up with the Buchanan River. The river provides 93% of our residents with their raw source of water here in the county. So the city's main concern is what additional measures are going to be taken once construction is complete to ensure that a leak does not occur into our raw water here in the county.
Okay, so first of all, I want to point out that this is natural gas, so it's nothing but.
Ma'am, would you like to take the podium? It might be easier for you to have a system there and then easier for...
Sure.
If you could please identify yourself again for the...
Yes, sir. So I'm Brittany Moody. I'm the Pipeline Engineering Manager for the ACP. So like I was saying, it's natural gas that the pipeline is carrying. So let's say there is a leak. It's going to rise. It's going to, it's going to the top because it's lighter than air, so it's not going to sit there and contaminate water sources. So that's the first thing I wanted to point out. Secondly, as far as leaks are concerned, when, right before we put the pipeline in service, we fill the pipeline full of water and hydrostatically test it to a pressure much higher than what it will operate at. So at that time, we will identify if there are any leaks. As far as protecting the, I guess the stream after it goes in service, we warranty our contractors for two years, so they're required for two years to come back and fix anything, any damages, any issues that there might be. So let's just say that once we put the stream banks back and we got them all seated and mulched and with all the curler's blanket, if something happens, it starts eroding, they're required to come back and fix it. After two years, then our operations department takes over and monitors and makes sure that everything is, you know, intact and stable.
How will you be made aware of the erosion if it were to occur?
So we monitor the pipeline at all times. During operations, we have certain procedures and certain times that we have to come out and actually physically walk it, checking for leaks, checking for erosion, checking for instability issues. After construction, for a period of a couple of years, we continue to have environmental inspectors on site and preparing reports and writing to FERC.
How often do those inspections?
It depends. Right after construction, Greg, can you remember the interval?
It's weekly.
It's weekly, but then as, you know, as we get further along, it backs off to biweekly and then monthly and then quarterly until it, until it's completely stabilized and is turned over to operations.
And what about after the two-year guarantee or warranty?
How long do we, how often?
You mentioned the two-year warranty.
Right.
The contractors.
Right, and then it's turned over to our operations department. And our operations department, we have a system, it's inspection monitoring system, and we put in the system, we're required to walk it every so often at specific intervals. We have to check valves, we have to, we have to run tanks, there's all kinds of monitoring exercises. We monitor it from the air, so all of that continues for the life of the pipeline.
How often is it walked by Dominion personnel?
I'm not in operations. I don't, do you know that often? Do you guys know that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have what we call an integrity management program, and in that integrity management program, we list by classification, and we need to talk about how pipes are classified. We look at population densities, so in a low population area, maybe a Class 1 pipe. So our integrity management program requires us to do certain monitoring on either a weekly day, a monthly, or annual basis. Class 4 pipeline, which is a high-density population area, will get monitored more frequently. The pipe in Upsher County is a Class 2 pipe, which means that we're going to increase, that our wall thicknesses are increased. We'll talk, I'll let Greg and Brittany talk about that because they're the engineers. Our frequency of inspection is more often than it would be in a Class 1. So that's all listed in our public integrity management program that's found on the web, on our web at dom.com.
Could those inspections increase due to the fact that this is our only raw water source here in the county for 93% of our residents?
Again, and I think the last time I was here, I encouraged you all and I encouraged the mayor and the city of Buchanan to be involved in the process. That's something that you can request through FERC. I want to, I do want to make this statement. We cross hundreds of miles of waterway in six different states in lots of areas that have water intakes very close to our pipeline crossings. We don't have, we've never had an issue with any of those water intakes. We do take that, or what we do seriously. So when, in terms of the frequency of inspection, it all has to do with the classification of the pipe.
Did you receive a copy of this letter that was sent to FERC from the mayor of Buchanan?
Yes, I did.
Could we request a written response to that letter? I know that Jay Holland, the city's engineer, has had a little bit of trouble communicating with Dominion residents and getting a response.
Yes. In our resource reports, we will respond to all those, but we will make a, we'll have a specific response to the letter, et cetera.
When can that be expected?
Well, we, our resource reports, as I indicated earlier on, are, will be sent to FERC next week, so after next week, after we submit those resource reports, we'll respond back.
We do have city representatives here. Do you gentlemen have any questions relative to this letter specifically, in addition?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Bob. I understand you folks here. You may not be aware, we did have a meeting with Bob before, and myself and our city engineer. And a lot of the questions that you're asking with our letter have already been, we had discussions on, and there weren't any specific details on exactly how this issue was going to be resolved and exactly the details. Now keep in mind, from an engineer's aspect, and for those of you that know Jay Holland, he is very deteriorated and very much an overachiever. He wants to know way ahead of time. But you've got to remember that through Charleston's HB 373 or the Source Water Protection Act, the city of Buchanan and the city water department is under very tight regulations on how we can protect our source water. Now, keep it in mind that at the time, initially, when Dominion had introduced the pipeline, the realm by which we are obligated by the state to, mandated by the state to protect wasn't as large as it has been changed to. We are now looking at what they are calling the, what do they call that? Not the ZCC, Peripheral Zone of Critical Concern, which they have now expanded out seven more miles around the Buchanan River, which now includes the tributaries that are feeding into it, understanding that the streams, of course, are crossed, being crossed, and our main river. Our main concern, of course, was how, first of all, environmentally, the impact of an underground pipeline coming through our river and the, and the way that that's going to be attempted, and the length of which, because environmentally, we take a lot of pride in our river and in our tributaries here in Upsher County, and that is really a big deal for not only the citizens, but also for our government. I have, or we already have asked to have an intervenor, and that would be Jay Holland, as part of the FERC process that I believe you alluded to. So he on behalf of the city of Buchanan has requested to be an intervenor. I spoke with the county administrator, and I've also suggested, not unlike what you did with Pass, that you designate an intervenor from the county commission as well, to also be a part of that process, so that we're protecting all of, all of that together. As far as any questions, we understand it, and we have every reason to believe that Dominion, as they have already mentioned, has crossed thousands of rivers, hundreds of rivers, and they know what they're doing. But for the city of Buchanan, for Upsher County, we are not assured yet, until we get the responses that we're looking for, that our source water protection is actually being protected. On behalf of the city, though, I would also ask that, as soon as the responses are made available, that the city can do that. The city is neither for nor against, because quite honestly, it is not coming through the city of Buchanan. But for the citizens of Upsher County, whom the city feels that are part of our city, we want to make sure that we're protecting the water as well. We would ask that, as well as that, that, that open communication lines be made with Jay Holland and the city of Buchanan more, as well as with the county commission, and that we come together as a team to make sure that all of our issues are being addressed and perhaps made available to all of the citizens of Upsher County and Buchanan, so they understand as well the issues and concerns that we do have with that. We're not neither for nor against at this point. Like I said, we just want to make sure that we're protecting the citizens and our water source. I don't have anything else. Unfortunately, our city engineer is off at another engineer's meeting, so he could probably get into a lot more of the specifics that you have in that letter, which I'm sure the engineers would appreciate a lot of that that's in there. engineers would appreciate a lot of that that's in there. We just want to make sure, we work with the county and we work with the city to provide the best insurance for our citizens that nothing in the future is going to be an issue. That's all. Unless you have any questions for me. It's all very well-written in the letter. Obviously, I, not being an engineer, did not write that letter, but I was very well-informed of it, and it was very well-written. I'm very proud to put my name to it. So having said that, that's all. Unless you've got questions for-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you, sir.
I'll continue with our-
Well, if you don't mind, one of the reasons why I brought these folks here is to answer these questions. So I've asked Greg to go into detail in terms of how we plan, how we think we plan, where we are in the process. There are a number of different approvals we need to get before we can say definitively how we are going to cross that, but he has, he's prepared to talk a little bit about river crossings in general and how we think we are, we will go across the Buchanan River. Greg?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Could you identify yourself again for the-
Yes, sir. Greg Clark. I'm the construction manager for the ACP Pipeline. And I think, ma'am, I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Carrie Wallace.
Carrie. Our, Jay had a specific question that showed up in our scoping meeting comments. Had to do about the ordinary high-water mark and the concrete, how much pipe we were willing to, to put on the pipe during, during the crossing of the Buchanan River specifically. In the, in the scoping question or our remarks, I guess, back, we did agree to comply with his, his request to extend our concrete up to the ordinary high-water mark. I think that's one of the questions that's in the letter. A lot of these questions will be answered, I think, as time develops. Right now, we're still learning, you know, through the agencies, which the United States Corps, the DDP, and others take jurisdiction over these, over these waters also. So we have to comply with their, their regulations on crossings also. So we're still trying to develop the actual means, I guess, we're going to try to cross it. So right now, you know, based on what we're, as we know right now, we'll, we'll have a, it's a bladder system or a copper dam system, basically, where we, we actually, the crossing itself, where we cross and then dig, dig through the river, will actually be a dry crossing, so it won't affect any downstream water intake, I guess. So the smaller streams will be, it's called a dam pump system. Basically, we dam up the small part of the stream, and we pump the water around into the, the lower part of the lower rightaway, and then cross it in a dry method, too. Those details will be worked out as we continue our process through the, through the agency, agency negotiations, I guess is the best way to put it.
Just so I understand, with the damming system, if you're crossing through dry waterways, are you crossing through the riverbed, not underneath it?
Well, actually, yes, ma'am. At this time, this is still early, you know, and we, we're still learning, you know, what there might be sensitive mussels or sensitive fish or other aquatic life in there that may change the way we have to do the crossing. But at this time, we plan on, it's called a, it's a dry crossing method, you know, based on where we're crossing that, where we're crossing at the Buchanan, just outside the second mines area. That area, it's got a good spot for how we can cross there with, with a bladder-type system. Basically, we, we do it, just a temporary dam that we put in. We still maintain flow to the river, obviously, but it, it makes our work area basically dry at that point, so it doesn't affect, not like we're just going off in the river with the equipment and digging through the, the stream bed while the water's still flowing. It, it'll be blocked in that area while we're, while we're actually crossing it.
So the crossing of the Buchanan River will actually be beneath the bed?
Yes, ma'am. The, the pipe will be underneath the bottom of the riverbed. We have to have at least-
The bed will be dug?
Yes. And we'll have at least, we have to have at least five feet of cover underneath the bottom of the riverbed to the top of the pocket.
Okay.
I think, maybe somebody back there, she raised her hand. I'm not sure if she had a question.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
We can move on. The next question, unless someone else has an issue relative to the string crossings.
I just have one question for you.
Sir?
What fill material will be used for that five feet?
It's one of her, it's one of her questions. I mean, if you want me to take it now or-
No, I'd rather wait.
Keep them in order.
Okay, that's fine. Just one other thing I wanted to, I guess, to try to, what was I going to say now? Oh, the, the details in, in specific to Jay's questions, and Jay approached us at the open house, the person we had here, Buchanan. And Jay and I had a lot of conversation, and some of the breakdown, you know, it was on my, on my part, so I'll shoulder that. But unfortunately, we have this along with 27 other counties in three states we're working on, so just, just be patient with us. We're still learning our process on how we're going to be able to try to cross. And just like I told Jake, he's one of the site-specific drawings for those crossings. We just don't have them right now. We, we still know the methods because we're still working with the agency to develop it, so.
Will you have to have those drawings when you submit your official application in October?
Yes, ma'am.
Will those be provided at that point?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have one more question regarding the crossings. Do you happen to have maps of the abandoned mine shafts that may run under the river where you'd have to be digging?
We, as part of Resource Report 6, we have to locate that kind of stuff as well, so we have looked at that stuff.
Yes, so to follow up to Brett's question, the, the federal process, we have 14, 13, 13 resource reports. And in those, it's, it's public, it's just public, I guess-
It's publicly available?
Yeah, available to everybody that has access to computers. So in Resource Report 6, we talked about abandoned mines and different things, you know, and what effect that they potentially, whether it be rim and pillar, longwall, tower lining, or that sort of stuff. So that's all identified.
Okay. Thank you. Our next question is relative to the estimated, estimated amount of truck traffic that will be expected once construction begins.
Okay. And then, and I think, do you, is there another question about that also, or was that where?
There's one, that's okay.
Okay. So, and I, I'm sure you guys are aware, there's a company right now building a pipeline, you know, and they have a warehouse over here right off Old 33. I don't know if y'all noticed how, you're kind of getting a feeling for what, ours will be very similar to that. Once we get, now, once we have not identified where our, they have a meeting locations called a warehouse yard or a contractor yard. We have not identified that yard. We plan on having one in this area, and we expect approximately 600 to 800 folks will be working in this area out of that, out of that warehouse yard for this particular spread. So as part of our FERC resource reports that we keep, we keep talking about, that's where all of our data comes from, and that's where it's all filed at, this is public record. There will be a truck, truck and traffic management plan filed in, in that report.
If I recall correctly, it's been presented to the commission. My memory serves me that there could be up to 1,600 truckloads of, of material for fill, to fill in where the pipe is going.
Sir, I don't mean to, there's, I'm not sure where those statements are coming from, but I hope we'll clear some of that up here just in a little bit. The biggest, the biggest amount of big truck traffic will be the pipe transport. Y'all witnessed it coming in, I guess, from wherever they got the pipe up in, probably Pennsylvania or somewhere, and it was stored out here along, along New 33. Of course, they'll have to distribute that out on the rightaway somewhere, exactly how we'll do, except our pipe's a lot bigger. We can only haul in our T-20s at a time on our trucks, so that, that increases your, your truck load. So we'll be, we'll be visiting with, you know, the local municipalities along with the state, because the state carries counties, the state or state carries counties for the act for the roads, and we'll have a hauling plan on how we anticipate hauling our pipe in and out to get to the work, so that'll be part of the truck management, the traffic management plan.
Our concern, the pipe that's out here on the New 33, of course, with it being a four-lane highway, we don't experience as much traffic, but because the ACP is proposed to go basically right around, right along Route 20, we are concerned in the fact that that's only a two-lane highway.
Sure. Typically, I mean, with, with the pipe this size and the truck traffic, typically, we normally have pile cars that, that they get with, that, you know, we'll, we'll look into to see exactly when the bus routes and when the school system works, to make sure we don't impede schools. Because I've, I've got a daughter's school, too, and just like Bob said, a county away, and I know how that, we don't want to upset the balance there with that, so. But that, that will all be planned, panned out in the-
Talking about the trucks traveling the rightaway, is it going to travel that way?
And so as far as the, the big equipment, the stuff that does the work, you know, digs the ditch, the backfills, that carries the pipe, all that stuff, once it gets to the rightaway, it traverses the rightaway, so you, once, then it, it'll stay on the rightaway pretty much the whole, the whole time. The main traffic will be the men getting to the work and the pipe itself, the materials.
Do you want to address this question about the material being brought in?
It's somewhere on your list. I mean, if you want to-
We can go ahead and go there.
Yeah, yeah, the comment I have, the, the industry, the pipeline industry, two years ago negotiated a transportation agreement, contract, that every pipeline company has to enter into with the State Department of Highways. So in addition to what we submitted to FERC, we will also submit to the West Virginia Department of Highways how we will handle traffic, any damage to the roads, how we're going to repair the roads. So it goes into great detail in terms of providing the information that you have. It doesn't have necessarily a public comment. FERC does have a public commentary, the Department of Highways does it, but you can always get involved in that permit process that we'll have to go through with the West Virginia Department of Highways. Very similar to a road use agreement that a natural gas driller enters into before they get the permit, before we're allowed to proceed with this project, we will have to have a road use agreement also with the West Virginia Department of Highways.
All right.
Yeah, so tailing on to that, you also have the track, the traffic management plan, which ties into our haul routes and such like that. So I think it'll be pretty transparent exactly where our intention is to be, and we have, we have to stay on those roads, because that's where we have bonded and permitted to be on, so.
What materials will be used for-
Right now, it's, we, we anticipate every, all the pipe will be backfilled with native materials. What we, what we bring out of the ditch when, during excavation, pipe will be put in, it'll be installed back in the ditch, and that material will be, will be put back every time the pipe.
Be no potash?
No, sir.
I think it's been indicated that we have to be a, a fill material utilized, is that correct?
Absolutely not. The ph material, the pH is, is very, very corrosive to our coating, our future monopropxy coating system we've installed on the pipeline. It's, we've heard this question out in three states, it's the first time I've heard it here in West Virginia, but we heard it down in North Carolina and, and Virginia, and it's just absolutely false. And so native materials is the best thing for our corrosion, our storage activities, our cathodic protection system, it's all, it's all hinged back on our native materials. So no, absolutely no potash, no more ph.
How many shut-off valves will be located in Upstate County?
I'll just stand up here, so.
Do you have any, pull this here here. Move back and forth.
So the, the valves are spaced according to class, as Bob mentioned earlier. In a Class 1 area, every point on the pipeline has to be within 10 miles of a valve. In a Class 2 area, they have to be within, it has to be within seven and a half miles, and in a Class 3, it's 10 miles. Currently, if this is going to change as our route gets refined and adjusted, because we have to make sure that we don't exceed those maximums. But currently, the way it is now, we have two valves planted in Upstate County. One is near Stony Run Road, and the other one is near County Route 30 over 19. I don't get it right.
Queens.
Exactly.
Queens.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, that sounds right. Yes.
Just let her shot a 10, let her shot a 10 mile.
So that's where they are right now. If we increase mileage or decrease mileage based on the route refinement, they could move slightly, but that's our current proposal.
I have a question. Those, those valves are about 20 miles apart right now?
Close.
So you said something about seven. I don't understand.
Well, okay, so in, in the, it depends on the class. If it's a Class 2 area, if you're going through a Class 2 area, you, the valves have to be, every, every point on the pipeline has to be within seven and a half miles of a valve. In a Class 1 area, every point on the pipeline has to be within 10 miles of a valve. So it's just going to depend on the class, and as we, as we adjust the route, as we do class studies on it to determine what class it is, and at that time, we will either increase the distance or decrease the distance.
But if these are Class 2 pipes, then-
They'll be 15, no.
Then it would be closer to that.
Well, here's the other thing. Let's just say that, like, out near Buchanan, Upstate High School, that is a Class 2 area. So we have to make sure that, that area is within seven and a half miles of a valve.
So you're looking at another valve coming in now?
No, not right now.
I think I was confused. You're talking about access to it has to be within seven and a half miles?
No, sir. The pipeline in length, every point on that pipeline has to be within seven and a half miles of a valve.
Oh, okay.
So you have a-
So you can have a maximum of 15 miles between valves in a Class 2 area. In a Class 1 area, it's 10, it's 20 miles, the, the distance between them. Now, if you have a Class 1 area and then Class 2 falls in the middle of it, you can still achieve yours within seven and a half miles if you've got your valve close to that, that Class 2 area.
I get it.
Correct.
Does population have anything to do with that?
Yes, sir. That's the class. Yes.
And that's why it's increasing here at the high school, because you're taking into account the schools that are there at the high school.
You take the schools into account and then all the houses, and you, we do a sliding mile, so we, we figure out a distance at 660 feet, and you slide that a mile, and you count the number of houses that are in that 660-foot wide corridor. And then the, the number of houses determine the location. The schools, the apartment buildings, picnic areas, all kinds of that stuff has, have different classifications that make those go up as well.
Since we're on the topic of the high school, I'm going to skip down to a question relative to the high school.
Okay.
Will the thickness of the pipe increase as it approaches the Upstate County high school?
It increases because of class. So in, in that area, it's a Class 2 area, so it's going to be 720 wall, so .72 inches thick.
Three quarters.
Almost three quarters of an inch there.
As opposed to the Class 1 thickness, which is-
Which is .6.
Excuse me, just a sec. On your valves?
Yes, sir.
Are they automatic shut-off or is it a manual shut-off?
They've got both. So we have them remotely controlled, so we'll have solar panels and everything set up with sensors. Our gas control operation watches them seven, seven days, 24 hours a day, and they can, there will be indications that come across their skater screen if there's any issues whatsoever, and they can automatically shut them.
So somebody wouldn't have to physically go out there and turn it off?
No, that's correct.
We could turn them off in Clark's room.
That's correct.
All the way to the east in North Carolina.
And you can even set them up to, if you have, like, a, a major pressure drop, that they automatically slam shut.
So it isolates that, that section?
I'll, I'll point out, the project's management and the project operation will be done by Dominion Transmission in Harrison County, the gas control center and the operations center. So it's a, it's a project that's, we're also locally managed from the construction and operating.
And Mr. Harrison?
Well, an additional special protection barrier will be installed along the pipe that's enclosed, you have somebody to the high school, or will it just be the thicker?
It's just, it's just a thicker wall.
Okay. What is the blast radius of total destruction zone for a pipeline of this size?
Okay, I'm assuming that means the potential impact radius, and the potential impact radius is, it's a calculation based on the pressure of the diameter, and for this 42-inch pipeline and the pressure that we are anticipating, the potential impact radius is 1,100 feet.
Will the pipeline be traveling within 1,100 feet of the high school?
No, the high school currently is 2,200 feet away, approximately 2,200 feet from the pipeline.
Could I just point out that Route 20 is going to be nine-hundred-foot distance away, right?
What's, I'm sorry.
20, is, is this a 20 the pipeline from the high school?
We cross, yeah, we cross Route 20.
Right, so it will be affected if there were to be a blast at that point, because 1,100 feet and 320 about 320, so you'd have trouble with the vehicles, emergency responders, block access to the high school and if there had, then what is-
If, if something would happen now, you know, of course, we have, we set up, our If, if something would happen now, you know, of course, we have, we set up, our operations people set up mock issues, and they meet with all the emergency responders, and they, they get all these plans into place, and so if something were to happen, it's not just going to be Route 20. You know, there's going to be other things, that there's going to be issues. So they will, they meet with the emergency responders, they send out flyers, they perform mock disasters, and get all this stuff into place.
Yeah, I think the emergency service will come from the city if I can, I would say, toward the high school. Our, our pipelines crosses on the, the south side of the high school from that point.
But life's placement, though, before it crosses, is, is parallel to 20 for a short time?
Yeah, a very short time, yes.
On its current.
The point is, if, if an explosion occurred there, you know, and takes out the water tower, which is backed up source of firefighting water for the high school, but it takes out 20 as well, blocking access to the high school for emergency responders. So it's, the high school could essentially become cut off by the blast. But you're not referencing the size of the potential fireball after the blast. And typically, on a breach of this size, the closest the first responder is going to get because of a thermal issue is about two miles. It's a big discrepancy between an 1100-foot blast radius and where that thermal barrier ends up.
I, I'm not sure where you're coming up with that, two miles.
I, I can send you the source data.
Okay, that's good, because, you know, we, we've not had very many explosions, Dominion hasn't, but.
Maybe Dominion hasn't, but could have looked at San Bruno.
Right.
And that was a 36 with water tankers within two miles.
Right, I, I mean, I'm not discounting anything, I'm just saying that, you know, like with, we have these valves, these automatic valves, they're shut off, they, they segregate a portion of the pipeline.
Okay.
So you've automatically taken its source away. It's got to burn out what's in the pipe.
It's got to burn out with TV days.
Right, but we've never had an instance where we can't get within two miles. That's a, that's a very far distance. Don't know what the parameters are and what has caused that to happen. If, I'm not saying that you're wrong, I know that's happened, but, you know, it's, it's going to depend, and we can't anticipate a disaster, you don't know what it's going to be. So we set up, we get all the plans in place on, you know, who the contacts are, you know, all, we've met with all the emergency responders, and then if something were to happen, we've got all the people in place to, to try to, you know, respond.
Yeah, see, we, we understand that you're doing your due diligence on this, this, we're talking beyond that, things that can't be accounted for, things that can't be.
You know, there's.
But physics.
Do you have a sense of your source data? Let us look at that.
Yeah, we'd like to look at that.
Yep.
And as to the valves problem, the, the shut-off system from remote shut-off didn't work in the system that was there.
So, are you sure they were remote?
That's what I remember reading.
Okay, because that's kind of a, not all valves have to be remotely operated?
Yeah.
We have made it that, we're making it, it's a good thing, it's a new, improved, good thing, but we're going to make all of our valves on this project so that they can be remotely operated.
We'll move on. With the communication with emergency services, what's the plan as far as during an emergency or during construction?
Take this one.
Yeah.
And I'll, you have a bit more?
First of all, the interstate pipeline system in North America is the safest form of transportation regulated by the Department of Transportation. A lot of the issues we're talking about here are theoretical. In my 25-plus years of experience working with Dominion Transmission, a lot of what we're talking about, I've never seen happen. So we can talk a lot about the radicals, but practically, what we do, we train. We train, and we train, and we train. We train fire departments, we work with local emergency management officials, we train internally, within our own, we'll theoretically take out the city of Morgantown, and we determine how we're going to handle that. We'll theoretically talk about what may happen in Buchanan, what may happen at the high school, what we do so we know well in advance if something like that were to ever happen, we're prepared to make, we're prepared to handle those types of situations. Dominion, its first core value is safety. We operate four nuclear power plants. Believe me, every day when we start a meeting, we start with a safety contact. So safety is something that we firmly believe, and we, and we, and every day, we live it, and it's important for us to operate any of our facilities in a safe fashion. FINSA, again, FINSA is the organization that regulates the pipeline as we operate. FERC gives a certificate, FINSA, Pipeline Health Safety Administration oversees the operation of the pipeline. In our integrity management plan, I referred to that earlier in the process, we talk about our communications to stakeholders, our communications to emergency management officials. Next week, you will get a letter from me stating that the integrity management program is in place, and give you a way to access that through the, through the internet. We contract with similar pipeline companies in counties to do training for, annual training for their pipe, for their fire departments. We've been operating the Corin Auto System in Upsher County since the 70s, it's in, out on, out towards Elkins, feeds the, actually feeds the regional Jo and connects into the Columbia system. So we have a couple compressor stations in Upsher County. So we're no stranger to Upsher County from an operations standpoint. But from a training standpoint, I, I think there's some, been some questions, well, are you going to pay your fire departments to, to fight a pipeline fire? The fire departments don't fight pipeline fires. Our people don't fight pipeline fires. Shut the gas off, extinguish the gas. We train fire departments how to handle an emergency if that were to take place, and basically, that is to protect adjacent structures, prevent traffic, allow us to come in and use our methods to be able to take care of any emergencies that exist. So it's a very planned process that we do across six different states that we operate our pipeline in.
Do you want, do you want to talk to Bob about, you know, during, like now, you know, and in the next couple of years leading up to construction, you know, Brett, Bob and I, and our group with construction, we'll meet with all the local counties, emergency services, fire department, police department, to talk about the route, and where we're going to be, and where our people are, you know, our housing and our warehouses, and then get with our contractors, and talk about, you know, evac and landing zones and hospitals, the, the, just the amount of influx of people now. Right now, our contractor, of course, as big as we're going to be, will have our, basically, first aid setup in our yard space to help, I guess, mitigate some of the, the influx of the, of the potential, you know, pinch fingers and lacerations, the minor stuff, but the major stuff, you know, big incidents on the right of way, things of that nature, we're going to talk about light flight, and, and get all this stuff in place, and we'll start that process here pretty soon. And we do that with each county, for each, each region, so.
We have one fire department in the county, and then a number of volunteer fire departments who operate on a limited budget. Will there be additional equipment provided to those volunteer fire departments, and they'll be able to respond adequately to an emergency such as this, if it were to occur? I know that's theoretical.
Right. Well, the question is, what, what good would it be for them to have equipment? I guess that's the question, because they don't fight pipeline fire. They, they protect adjacent structures, which they have the equipment to do that now. We do an annual donation, probably to 300-plus fire departments along our pipeline system, so they will get something from us. It's a nominal one, but it's appreciation, and we physically take that check out there to that fire department, visit with that fire chief, talk to them about pipeline safety. So we, we, we are a relationship-type company. We believe firmly in having good established relationships with each county emergency management official. We meet with LEPCs on a regular basis, our operations people do, so that's important to us.
Right offhand, as my main concern as far as the fire departments go, we have one ladder truck in the county, and if there was a major disaster such as this, I would expect that more than one truck would be needed to respond.
I'm not sure why you'd need a ladder truck for a pipeline fire.
I'm just thinking about the surrounding buildings. If their job is to manage the fire of the buildings that are surrounding the pipeline, then if you were to be in the city, there would only be one major truck to respond. And maybe that's not a concern.
No, well, you know, we have thousands, there's more, there's more miles of interstate pipeline in West Virginia than there are interstate highways. And on a daily basis, there, we're really, if you look at any of the incidences, I know we've had one, Dominion has not, but NYSOR's had one, that was very visible, we understand that. They determine what the cause is, or they do, and NYSOR's has really stepped up their process for replacing their pipe. We, we are doing, we've done, we do this all the time on an annual basis, we replace our pipe, prevent those things. Prevention is, is more important to us than the actual response, or that we're ready to respond. So in our integrity management programs, it's all about communication to stakeholders, communication to people that live near the pipeline. Typically, when you look at what are the causes of issues or incidences associated with pipeline ruptures, it's usually third-party improvements, somebody has hit that pipe, and that pipe may not, nothing may happen to that pipe right away, but they may not say, I, I've dinged your pipe, but if they knock off the annal coating, it impacts the cathodic protection, rust occurs over time, and that's typically what happens with, in a pipeline incident.
But we have the ability to find that now. We've got a cathodic protection system, and we have test stands all over the pipeline, and we, in our inspection monitoring system, we check those test stands to check the, the current that's on the pipe. And if there is an incident like that, and we're losing electron, and it's, it's rusting, there's an issue, we will pick it up in our test stand, and so we can, we can find that.
In the most remote area of the pipeline?
We have the cathodic protection system on every part of the pipeline.
And that's monitored regularly as well?
That, well, that, they come out by hand, and that's part of the inspection monitoring system, checking all those test stands.
It's a, it's a, it's our close-knit surveys, it's, there's a reading, I'm taking every two and a half feet along the pipeline to look for this, this type of, it's a, it's called a one-off survey, basically, that it'll show any issues during holidays, and any.
And you don't need that to happen immediately, because corrosion happens over time. So there'll be plenty of, you know, checks that we're going to find before something would happen as a result of corrosion loss.
I, I don't mean to minimize your question about the need for equipment, and that, and volunteer fire departments and paid fire departments are very costly. We understand that. We do our best to support that in whatever way possible. We donate equipment, again, we train, we train, we train.
And I think, during the process of, you know, the pre-construction stuff, we'll see, we'll learn what the limitations are, you know, and what they might, what fields they might be like, and whether it be trench rescue, or, or whatever the case might be. I mean, some are offices, some are better, better equipped than others, and we realize that, and that's part of the, that's part of the reach out to, you know, to meet with the folks, so.
Do you contract with outside emergency respond, outside agencies such as Emergency Service Protection that has come to our meetings a few months ago? They'll soon be moving into the county. Do you contract with other EMS providers such as them, rather than utilizing the local Upsher County EMS? I mean, you mentioned having the emergency responders on-site, are those employees at Dominion?
No. The, the on-site people that we're talking about, it's our contractors, our construction contractors that we hire, they bring their own little, they call it a quarterback, or something, but they set it up at their, at our warehouse yard, and it'll just be right beside their construction trailer. And they have, I don't know if they're actual doctors or nurses or qualified people who can, just as a first respond kind of thing, like, you know, I'm lightheaded, I might be dehydrated, you might be, might have a small cut, or, and they'll address all of those. They can also determine, oh, this is outside of us, you got to go somewhere else.
They do triage, in other words, they determine?
Exactly.
The seriousness of the injury, and if it's something that can be handled locally with a Band-Aid.
Correct. They'll hit it right there, and that's the end of it.
And it also helps, it also helps their workers comp and all that sort of stuff. So I mean, it's kind of a two-fold, but the, the main, the main thing is to make sure that we don't have a flood of people necessarily coming into the, to our facility, so.
Do they accompany the contractors along the pipeline route of construction?
They'll be set up at each of the warehouses. So this project is currently broken into 12 spreads all the way to North Carolina, and there'll be one at each, there'll be 12 of them, so there'll be one at each warehouse. So like the first spread's about 30 miles long or so, that, that one station will handle all 30 miles of workers, which is that 4,700, 5,800 range that we've been talking about.
Mr. Harrison, did you have a question?
Yeah, your comments concerning training for emergency personnel, first responders, 95% of the first responders in this county are volunteers. We have mandatory trainings every, every year for, to keep up our certifications. Many of them work two jobs on top of being volunteers. Additional training hours are a hardship. It's a serious hardship, and it's something that, that I think you need to take into consideration, how to address that. The, the issues about equipment, you mentioned trench rescue, yes, that's it. Climbing this terrain that is, that is going to be very difficult to access in some areas, we're just not equipped to handle it at this point, especially if we need to extricate somebody that is trapped.
I understand. This is not the first time we've, we've heard this, in, in other work, in other areas, so.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's a huge concern on top of what happens to emergency response times, because we only have one north-south road to work with. And, and Paulman'sville Road all the way down to Queens, if, if you guys are using that for a lot of access, I'm, I'm seriously concerned about not only how can I respond with a fire engine or an ambulance, but how can I get backup from the city of Buchanan to the south end of the county? Because my biggest fear is that you, you've got us cut off for, for hours every day, that we can't respond on, on a timely basis. We, we don't have the backup.
How would you account for hours on?
I'm not, first of all, I'm not sure what your question is. Do you have a very specific question?
Well, I, I want you to, you, you keep saying, you've been saying that, oh, we'll train, we'll work with emergency response, we'll work with all this. It, it, it sounds real good when you're standing there saying it, but trying to get those people in a room together to learn what they need to learn is going to be very difficult, because we have a hard time just getting those people together in a room.
So, so we've been doing that for years over six states. We do this annually, we do it again.
Okay. I'm going to force you on to my question.
Yes, Mr. Harrison, we are going to maintain a professional atmosphere here, and if I'm answering your question, you should not speak.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I was a volunteer fire department. I was a president of a volunteer fire department. I know exactly what you're talking about, know exactly what you're talking about. Unfortunately, in West Virginia, rural areas, Pennsylvania, Ohio, New York State, where we operate our pipeline, we run into those circumstances. We do our very best to try to work with people that work, that are volunteers in the fire department, and we try to train them the very best we do. We, we get together with all the other pipelines that exist, Columbia exists here, this, in this county. We will go with Columbia and do mutual training, so that we don't have to take a fire department to two or three different trainings on pipelines, we'll just do one. We'll sponsor it in a specific area that's easy access in the evening when folks can get there. So we understand the nature of the volunteer fire departments, and we try to work with them to do, to, to make sure that they are adequately trained to deal with the emergencies that may exist as a result of the pipeline incident.
Okay, and, and you keep referencing your vast experience, how many 42-inch pipeline systems do you have?
I, I think our largest pipeline is 36.
Thank you.
How wide is the proposed area of construction for the pipeline? It's nominally 125 feet wide, so unless we're in Farmview. We're in Farmview, we take an additional 25 feet to segregate topsoil. So we'll, we'll segregate the topsoil across the 125 feet and store it in the extra 25 foot section, so when we're done, we can put it back across the top line. There'll be areas for streams, so that we make sure that we're not contaminating the streams, and we'll get material out of the stream while we're working in it. We'll get extra workspace blocks on either side of that as well. So it'll be a little bit wider beyond our buffer zone of the streams to, to accommodate installation of the stream crossing as well. But nominally, it's 125 feet wide during construction. And what's after construction?
After construction, we were proposing a 75-foot wide, so all the rest of that 50 feet will go back to the way it was before, and we'll have the rights to it.
So, so we'll maintain 75 feet?
So, so if you went through a meadow, you put the soil back, seeded?
Yes, sir.
And it would look just like it did?
That's, that's correct. We, we'll compact the trench lines, and we'll put, put it back in there, and then we'll decompack the soil once we get the last layer of subsoil, and then the topsoil back over top of it, and then seed all of our last lot.
When you say it'll look the way it did before?
It'd be set in a pattern, in Farmview.
So, but do you keep it mowed, or?
We brush all of it.
Yes.
Okay, so it will be short, it won't be like the rest of the meadow would rest?
Oh, no, someone's meadow, they, they make their hay, and everything else crops, they crop across, but we won't mess with any of that.
Okay. Okay.
We'll, we'll only mow it in the wooded, in the wooded areas.
Okay.
And of course, FERC tells us how often we can do that. Now, if you're in Farmfield or whatever like that, where, where do you normally do to maintain it?
Yeah. If it's currently used for agricultural crops, hayland, pasture, it will be just as is now. There will be no changes except for during construction. We're, we got all that stuff.
We, we work with the landowner. And if the landowner has a specific seed mixture or things of that nature that they want on their, on their property as a result. And for, we've been there. We, we will work with those landowners to make sure that happens. A lot of landowners want food plots for their, for their animals and whatnot. We work with them of that. Uh, we do pay for crop damage for a period of time, for crop loss.
During construction.
All that is negotiated as we look at trying to take the right way through, through the landowner.
So it can be farmed?
Farmed?
Or it could be farmed. What about the digging and the tilling that's required? The digging is a problem?
We, we actually bury a deep...
We bury it four feet deep. So you have four feet of cover in, in those areas.
Okay.
In the tillboard areas.
Minimum four feet.
Can you provide explanation of completed projects in similar terrain?
Sure. Right now, you know, Bob and I worked on a job down at our, our Shillian facility near Charleston, South Charleston, West Virginia, went up to our Cornwall station in Aughaini. Very similar terrain. We did jobs all, obviously, all the way across, you know, West Virginia. We've got, I don't know how many miles we've done in West Virginia. Up to 36-inch, obviously.
Okay.
Also Pennsylvania.
Upstate College, we did an 80-some mile pipeline.
I have about, with my tenure just with Dominion in the last six or so years, or eight years, around 300 miles. I've built, I guess, a similar terrain here. So, West Virginia, Pennsylvania, Virginia, so.
Will barriers be in place to prevent a breach of security or terrorism threat along the pipeline?
I mean, that's, I guess that's kind of an open question. If the, the vows that we talked about that'll be in the county, we'll have a...
A security fence.
A security fence around those. It'll be secure. They'll have our, our company lock on it. Only our company employees will have access to that. Of course, part of our operating procedures, and of course, after 9/11, a lot of stuff changed in the whole country operates now. But we are part of homeland security. We have, we are alerted to threats, you know, depending on what, what situation or, you know, how, how, how it looks. So any type of threats, terrorist threats and things, homeland security and our, and our corporate security will work together hand in hand if there's any type of known threats or threats out there that we, we have to watch out for.
It'd be considered critical infrastructure. And they know that the FBI has a program called liaison with various industries to ensure that they're aware of the changing environment that we operate under today.
We also have a seated fusion table down at Charleston.
But the majority of it is 100% underground? So it's just the vow sites that are above ground that we will have security fence in?
So there'll be a, yeah, there'll be a standard seven or eight-foot tall recycling fence with, you know, with the wire, similar what you see around any other type of facilities. Gated access, locked, secure, so signage.
I have one final question on behalf of the commission. And that's whether or not other counties along the proposed pipeline have been allotted donations or any type of funding for recreational complexes? Are there any other benefits to the county? And if you have any scholarship opportunities for students in the county?
Yeah, we, Dominion, one of the other things that we do in addition to operating safely is we believe in giving back to the community. Give a good example of what happened yesterday at Jackson's Mill. We had over 110 employees helping getting the mill ready for their camera season. We do DOGS projects annually. Been doing it for 15 years. We have a pretty active vibrant foundation. Uh, so we, we've been making donations for a long time in West Virginia. We will do that specifically. We are working right now on a specific plan to give donations along the pipeline corridor. Please let me know if there's a needy cause in your community that we need to look at. Dominion would be delighted to provide that support. We don't feel that that's a bribe, but we feel it's the right thing to do. Giving back to the, all good employers should allow their employees to spend time working volunteer fire departments and nonprofits. We give our employees annually eight hours leave for volunteer time. Yesterday, those 110 employees were paid by Dominion to work in eight hours of volunteer time at Jackson's Mill. So that's something that we are very, that we take a lot of pride in, in making that happen. And we've done a lot of things in Uptown County over the years as well. We'll continue to do that. In fact, we'll do it more now that we have a bigger asset in your county as well.
Is there an application process for the in-kind donation?
Yeah, you go on dom.com. And there's a search bar on our website. Just write in "foundation." It'll bring you up to the webpage that you have to make application. We only, through that process, we only get to 501(c)(3) organizations. That is, if you're established nonprofit, we can, we can make a donation to our foundation. We have a West Virginia Community Investment Board, which is comprised of all our operating companies, Dominion Cove, Dominion Transmission, Mount Storm, that we sit around a table. We determine whether it's a worthy cause or not. We look specifically at areas of operations or areas that we're building, and we prioritize those areas as well. When you ask about recreation complexes, we have a tendency not to want to do recreation complexes because everybody has a recreation complex they want us to do something with. But this year, we, we came, we actually established three priorities. The first was education. Well, first was environmental. And over the next two weeks, you'll see that we'll be donating $100,000 in West Virginia. Two of those projects are for studies of streams, specifically in the Mon National Forest. One will be for a nature trail in, outside of Glenbow. And the other one will be for a botanical garden in Morgantown. The next round of our major gifts will be in education. So we hope that some of your schools have applied. I haven't seen those grants yet. And the final one, which I would really encourage you to get involved in, it will be called what we call our community grants. Now, I have, I don't know what they will look like this year. They haven't told me. I am the chair of the, of our Community Investment Board. So that, that is round three. And I think that's where you should look at something maybe major in this, in this area as well.
Those are all the last questions that we have compiled.
Are there additional questions from the...?
Yes, I, I just had a couple third quick ones. On the 36-inch pipeline that you floated that you did, what was the pressure on that? Do you know, my fan?
Um, 1250.
Mm-hmm. And, and approximate length?
Um, 48 miles. That's one of them.
We have one over in Maryland.
That's one I was referring to.
What was our 30-inch one?
We did a 30-inch in 2012. That was 44 miles long, 14,400 feet.
The company operates over 6,000 miles of regulated interstate pipelines. Pressure's up to the, the one that you just gave.
Or more.
Or more.
Our lighting facility runs 50, 5250.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's important to understand when you, when you talk about the operation of a pipeline system. We have, in Clarksville, we operate our pipeline system. A lot of it's automatic. A lot of it's software-driven. We do have individuals that answer phones there that set pressures, set limits on the pipeline. The logic systems that we use in our computer systems will not allow us to over-pressurize a pipe. So there's, there's set, set conditions and within the, all the SCADA systems that we have that, and there's checks and balances both at the compressor stations, on the compressor station's logic, in our control panel logic that will not allow us to over-pressurize a pipe. People will think, "Well, what happens if you overpress it?" It's virtually impossible. It's, it's impossible to over-pressurize.
There has to be two or three forms of protection, too.
I, I, I understand that. That's, that's an issue. Last, last question I have, and I think it's very simple. Why is it necessary for this pipeline to be as close to the high school or as close to the city of Buchanan as you would plant it? With, with all the vacant land in Uptown County, why does it need to be that close?
We can go down the path of telling you how we lay out a pipeline. And hopefully that helps because we don't go through and locate all the schools and all the homes and point them and say, "Okay, get away from them." So what we'll do is we learn where we need to start, where we need to end, and the points that we need to hit along the way for delivery, for receipt and delivery points.
Which we have one down next to Queens.
And we have one down really close to, into Randolph County. It's just inside Randolph County out, just outside Uptown County into Randolph County. We have a point that we have to hit.
Adolf.
So we're pretty much going from March Junction, which is in, just inside the Harrison County line, right on the Harrison Lewis line. And our first point is hitting that spot right on the Uptown-Randolph County line. Okay? So we're, we do a straight line. That's the ultimate goal. Well, that's not gonna work for the topography reasons.
Environmental reasons.
Environmental reasons.
Cultural reasons.
Cultural, rare threatened native species. So we find to, and we tweak until we get the least impactful route, but still achieving the business goal of meeting the points. And that's how we ended up where we are in Uptown County.
I, I'll give you two examples, two very specific examples of where high schools are located adjacent to interstate pipelines. Those interstate pipelines were there and the, and the schools built their high schools adjacent to those interstate pipelines. It's all along Route 50. You look where the Dodgers County High School is. If you look to the right of Dodgers County High School, Dominion Transmission owns and operates a pipeline that runs there. You go further down the road towards Parkersburg at Ritchie County High School. If you look to the left of Ritchie County High School, our main line defeats Parkersburg coming out of Cornwall Station that's adjacent to, to Ritchie County High School. Classifications were increased after they put those, at our cost, after they put those high schools there. So when you think that, and those are much closer than the 2,100 feet that we're referring to, to the Buck County High School here.
Well, that high school down in Shillian, we just built that line. It's right, or we re...
That's Riverside, actually.
Yeah, Riverside, I'm sorry. We, we, that line, that, that school's really close to our line.
That school was built after that pipeline was there? Or before that pipeline was there, too?
I think you had a question.
I got, I got two quick, quick questions. Number one, in Queens, the pipeline is slated to go through the old strip job, I believe, job number 10.
That's, that's right there, the 10-mile creek, sir?
Yeah. And that, that, ever since that bird turned over, it is very sporadic. Produces acid all the time. Has to be treated all the time.
Yes.
What precautions are you gonna take for your pipeline covering to maintain the integrity of, of the pipe at that particular point?
As far as, as far as the corrosion nature of it?
Yes.
Yes. And we, and I'm sure Fred will jump in here with me. This, we, we, we've, we've had this issue before, obviously, on one other lines, other, we call mines inside of mine drainage issues. Typically, as we're, as we're excavating the ditch, we will receive those, those points, work with the mining company or whoever operates, whoever operates those outfalls. And we'll try to help redirect those waters to try to not have them basically laid in the pipe and around the ditch line. So, but, and we know, we're never gonna discover.
Will you increase the size, the thickness of the pipe through that area?
Not necessarily.
No. But we do perform soil resistivity studies along the entire length of the pipeline. And we will learn those locations. And we'll just up our cathodic protection system.
Yes.
The second question I had was concerning invasive species. And your contractors that bring in their excavators, are they required to sterilize their tracks before they get? I, you know, I just say, a prime example is the, been in trail down in Fayette County. Cuts who got down there. Wiped that, the entire hillside, basically.
Yes. What, what we anticipate on this job, What, what we anticipate on this job, our, our equipment will either come in fully sterilized, you know, it'll, we'll have an individual certified that it's been sterilized or it'll be sterilized right at, right at the yard, in a metal warehouse yard.
And the public will have access to those records.
And, and we're required to do invasive species studies, pre and post.
Yeah, it's, it's fine, I'm just saying, it only takes one seed on a track to, you know, to have something that is unknown to.
Yes, but we will do pre and post surveys as well, not, not only sterilizing our equipment, but we do pre and post surveys to make sure that nothing happens.
And if something did grow, how would you?
We're responsible for that, for the extrication, yes.
After pollen weeds.
Yep.
That's all I got.
Uh huh. Ma'am, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was wondering if you were planning on building noise barriers around the pressure stations because some of the noise levels, especially in the lower frequency, can be injurious to health and even mental health.
Okay, so there's no stations here? There, there's one station in St. Louis County, just inside Louis County line?
Yes.
And then the other one is not until we get way down in Virginia. We do, we are required to do noise studies at all of our stations, and we make sure that we meet the, the required noise levels.
And so we have to have, we have to maintain a 55 dB at the nearest.
At the nearest noise sensitive area, yeah.
At the nearest reception.
5 dB at the nearest?
Receptor.
Receptor, okay.
Yes, ma'am. We do post, so we've already done our post studies, our pre-studies at Merz and at all the three stations, so we already have a baseline there. So then after we come in and we operate, we start operating, we do an operating study and then we do an after study as well. All that material, all that information is supplied to.
So to answer your question, yes, we either have to change our mufflers or, or our dampening system around, around the engines to, to maintain that 55 dB.
Or our buildings.
Or buildings, or the design of the way that the mufflers are orientated near, to the nearest receptors or, and it, and it changes, obviously. You know, as we go into operations, if someone builds a new house, you think, we, we have to keep changing that application.
Okay, so there could be ongoing liaison with.
Yes, ma'am. It doesn't just stop, it doesn't just stop once we stop construction, it continues to operations also. Yeah, and a lot of, unfortunately, a lot of what you referred to, and I think what you've seen is what's happened with non-jurisdictional propresses station, non-jurisdictional pipe, that I don't want to differentiate here. This is a different piece, this is a FERC regulated approved pipeline process. A non-jurisdictional gathering line, which you've seen a lot across north central West Virginia, don't need approval, don't need sound studies, don't need designer facilities to, to meet certain specific guidelines. Unlike this pipeline, which will, goes through rigorous, I mean, as I said, we're starting to run this marathon, but we're still training. We won't get to that point until sometime in October where we'll actually make our application, and FERC will take approximately a year of approval. And during that time, your questions that you asked today, which were all good, any questions that the county commission has, any questions that the city has, are all part of the process that we, that we will have, that we will respond to. Again, maybe I was a little premature by saying next week or two weeks we'll have a response to the city, because we don't, may not know, because we haven't had any much contact with the Corps of Engineers, the DEP has to weigh in, and all that has, and I know Jay is, is somewhat impatient, all that takes, and all that is taken into consideration. Multiple facets come into play when we determine how we're going to cross the stream. So it's just not, we're just going to protect your water, which we are going to protect your water.
We, we did specifically answer one of Jay's, or a couple of Jay's questions in the intervention part with the scoping comments, and those went out a couple of days ago.
So I'll pull those and send those to you, so you don't have to dig through the process.
But if there's additional questions within the letter that we have an answer on, so we can.
But the crossing methods and everything that we just presented to you guys, that's what we're proposing at this time, based on what we've learned from our surveys and from the stream widths and from some of the conversations we've had. And like Bob said, we're meeting with the Corps, we're meeting with the DEP. This is what we presented them as our proposed preferred method of crossing. They will come back and tell us whether that's acceptable or not.
I have a question.
We'll just keep that in mind.
The existing pipeline that runs through Hemlock and Adolf now, you're going to have to cross that, aren't you?
Is that, is that the Coronado Line, or is that, is that the Columbia?
I think it's Columbia, I'm not sure. But it goes, it goes across the Hemlock Bridge?
Yeah, several across.
Yeah, we, but we have an inter.
How do you do that?
We'll actually, we'll actually go into them. We, we actually have an interconnect with them, not one of the above eight operators.
When we say interconnect, they, they want some gas service from us, so that will be a delivery point that we take gas off of this process and put it on to Columbia system.
Excellent. We'd like to have some of that here.
You take that one home.
So, you know, one of the things we will do is, we are working on cap policy, and I'll, I'll work with economic development agents here and all the counties as we move forward. One of the criticisms that we have received specifically on this project is why are you transporting this gas out? We actually, I was very much involved in writing a piece of legislation in session in Charleston called Senate Bill 390. Senate Bill 390 will allow LDCs, mountain air gas, hope gas, to expand their systems to reach customers that are not being reached now. Hopefully, it provides gas service to some industrials and some businesses, so some more gas will be used, not necessarily off this pipeline, but will allow them to expand their systems so that they use in West Virginia.
Well, you gotta know where the market is. You gotta know where the market is.
Well, and, and in case, there's a case that Poconales County, which we go through with this line, has no gas, no gas customers, it's really not fair, well, Senate Bill 390 will, if, if at all possible, allow them to create, build some infrastructure to get maybe use of the gas.
I tend to remedy that issue. I tend to remedy that issue. Any additional questions?
Yeah, we would too have a direct question for you as an engineer and you as a construction supervisor, who would be emailing you, is there a phone number, how would we contact you guys directly?
Email.
Okay. How, can you give me this?
We can give you.
Sure, yep. We, we need to get the information for the, you know, some of the stuff that, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, so.
Kevin.
Kevin, okay. And Kevin, some of your concerns, and I'm going to just step out a little bit of land here and I'll take the, I'll take bar.
The process that we're going to go through, the pre-construction process, and Bob and I've done this a lot, through several counties, you know, conjunction with our engineering side, inter-construction contractor, we'll meet with you guys. And I assume you must sit on the fire department or, or something, you seem like you know quite a bit about it, so we want to meet with those folks and, and talk about this job, and lay, have wall maps and then lay this route out and look at our, look at our haul routes with you guys, and then talk about what some of the best avenues are, and where, where your guys' concerns are, and maybe adjust our, our haul routes, not to choke the, I understand the road system, I've lived here my whole life, so I believe me, I understand what your concerns are. So just want to try to, I think the pre, the pre-work up ahead is, is going to help hopefully alleviate some of the concerns. And I'm not going to say it's going to completely fix it, because I mean, it is, we are going to, we are going to, we are going to have a lot of truck traffic. You know, so, but don't, the project down here, I mean, it's, it's going to give you some general sense, I think, they're really starting to get ramped up now, you're, you're starting to get a little bit of appeal, kind of, kind of what you'll see, but we're going to really work hard to try to get our, our yard in position where we don't, because that's where the main influx is. We don't want to have a yard space where we're stacked up on the, on the four lane, trying to get into our yard and have state police to come out visiting every day out there to check in the traffic. So we've had this issue, this is not our first, our first big project, so, but we're, we're going to do a lot, a lot of thought and process on how we can position our, our space and our interhaul route, so.
You know, I make this commitment to every county commission I've spoken to, I pledge that we will do the right thing, and I will be accessible to you for not doing the right thing and accountable to you. The other thing is, this is a positive, we have to look at the positive. You know, in 2020, we're going to generate $1.9 million for Upsher County in personal property taxes. In 2021, we're going to generate over $2 million in personal property taxes annually for Upsher County. So that's money that the commission will get, a lot of it will go to education, but there will be others that you can use at your disposal. There'll be jobs for the local economy, convenience stores will flourish, campers will need to be put somewhere, all that flat ground that's out there on 33 is done there probably for a reason, probably to accommodate some of the things that we will need. So I think you have to look at also on the positive side, what this means for, for Upsher County.
Well, I trust that as the project proceeds, and we're talking a multi-year period, that on occasion, questions will be raised by the public, questions be raised possibly by the city council or the commission, and then we can invite you, the entity available, to come back and present responses or progress reports on, on the situation.
You may even have me on speed dial.
I have one, one question about these figures, where do they come from?
Where's what?
Your figures on.
Our tax department created those figures, and it's based on a complete, comprehensive formula. I would encourage you to call the state tax department and ask how the Board of Public Works, and we're taxed not by the assessor of Upsher County, but by the Board of Public Works, which is the state tax department, and it's based on revenue, number of miles, depreciation, net income, a number of different variables that goes into generating those numbers, and net asset value, et cetera. So the state department may not have those figures yet, they will, once they make an assessment, they will ask us for the asset value of that pipe within Upsher County, the appreciation numbers, the actually cost of money at, at some point in time, so there's a number of different factors that goes, that go into that.
They don't have the numbers, can't have it?
Our, our people, our internally Dominion's tax folks generate those numbers.
They don't have it yet.
They wouldn't have those because we don't have an asset underground yet, so, no, the state department won't.
Right, so you're estimating based on?
That's our estimation, yeah. Based on being a taxpayer in West Virginia for well over 125 years, we know pretty much how, how much it's going to cost us to operate this asset.
Hundred a penny, probably.
We have to, well, and it changes. As this gets longer in West, in, in Upsher County, you get more money, it gets shorter, you get less money, so. And that as the route changes.
Was that 1.9 million statewide?
I mean?
Was that figure statewide?
That figure was for Upsher County alone.
That was for Upsher County alone?
Yeah.
1.9 million in 2019, what did you say?
In 2021, West Virginia, all the counties, now the four counties in West Virginia, will get a combined total of $8.6 million worth of personal property tax from this project.
All the counties?
All, all the combined counties. In 2022, it will be $9.3 million combined too. And that, there's a stated formula, you all probably know it better than I do, a lot of that money will go to the school system, so it helps the schools.
I mean, the basic problem with an eight mile.
This school aid formula, I bet.
Seventy-three percent of the.
Yeah.
It's a good thing for the schools, very good thing, good, good thing for the future as well.
We have a document that goes against us.
Thank you for your presentation. It's always good to hear people from communities that are close to Upsher County and Louis County.
Harrison County and Dodgers County.
And I live here.
Yeah, that's, I think that's.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's home for us, yeah.
Are there any additional questions from any of the commissioners, any comments?
Sure.
And we have 15 minutes before our next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Ongor.
Thank you.
Okay, I reconvene the Upsher County Commission from its recess. We'll go down to items for discussion. We have my next appointment, 11 o'clock, Joyce Harris Thacker, Concerns of Police Survivors, presenting a proclamation recognizing National Police. So in the next few minutes, we'll cover some of the material. First, we have correspondence from Robbie Morris, Chair, Corridor H Highway Authority, regarding the new plan to finish Corridor H by 2020. Approval and signature resolution urging Governor Earl Ray Tomlin to direct the Department of Highways to implement a public-private partnership to finish Corridor H. This is a request for us to support such a recommendation or request. We have a motion to support the resolution of the Corridor H authority.
I'm going to wish, what's that, a people wish?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries, and I would request that Kerry follow up on that, if you're there or not. Next, we have correspondence from Rodney Rollinson requesting the appointment of Even, or Evelyn Thomas, as the new Director of the Upsher County Community Corrections, David Court Center, effective May 16, 2015, at the starting salary of $28,080 per annum.
Before this item is addressed, I would like to make a correction. The effective date will actually be May 17.
May 17.
Which will be the beginning of a pay period, Sunday, May 17.
Sunday, May 17, instead of 16. Do you have a motion to approve that hiring?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Stephen M. Langer, E-911 Director, requesting that secondary payment bonus be changed from a part-time employee to a full-time employee effective May 11, 2015. Is there a motion to approve that transfer?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Stephen M. Langer, E-91 Director, requesting the appointment of Doyle R. Cutwright, the second, as a full-time telecommunicator, effective May 24, 2015, at the waiting rate of $11 per hour. Do you have a motion to approve that hiring?
I'm going to agree with that.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from James L. Ferry Jr., requesting to be considered full vacancy on the ETAP board. Is there a motion to approve Mr. Ferry's request?
I would have to table this discussion after speaking with Buddy this morning, he's on that board, and it seems that they had conversation last week on two other individuals that are also interested, so I would recommend that you ask.
We'll make a recommendation. We'll have a lot of dates. We have one last prior to our appointment. Approval and signature of the upgrade license agreement with Xerox Government Systems LLC for the Pace Financial and Paynote software. License fee slash migration fee for the software is $1,130 for a renewal period of 12 months and was included in the AS400 contract approved and signed by the commission on April 16, 2015. Do you have approval to, to fix another signature on the licensing agreement?
I'm going to agree with that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. We now have 11 o'clock, and we have again Joyce Harris Thacker representing Concerns of Police Survivors. Welcome, Joyce.
Good morning. Thanks for having us here this morning. Go online, Terry, put this up here next to your speaker. Let's see, one of our state troopers here, but if you will, would mine, go ahead and get started, that's our police officers to come and stand behind the commission, if you will allow that.
Are they armed?
Yes, but not dangerous.
Take their mace scans away from them.
We are here today to honor our police officers who every day get up, put their uniform on, and put their lives on the line every day as they go out to serve and protect. And we're also here today to honor those and to remember those who paid the ultimate sacrifice. And I'd like to read the proclamation, and once I do that, I also have our Concerns of Police Survivors ribbons to distribute, Concerns of Police Survivor pins, and also stickers for your, your vehicles, so don't forget, you know, certainly if you guys get those. Maybe before I read the proclamation, I'd like to read a couple poems, if you all don't mind, that, that I wrote, and one honoring our law enforcement officers every day, and especially during this week of National Police Week, and also one that I wrote just for my late husband, Trooper Dave Harrison. This is called "Surrounded by Heroes." The battleground is a familiar route, walked by heroes of all. Of their allegiance, there is no doubt in the service for some. Community callers are their suit, lives on the line every day, deserving of our lasting tribute in our nation's capital each May. They are our neighbors and friends, patrolling our streets with each alarm. Heroes of home, our policemen, during their desk to keep us from harm. Service of honor. He served with honor every day, with never thought to boast, putting others first always. He paid the ultimate cost. A quiet and humble man, never wanting undue attention. Now articles and news reports too numerous to mention. A community in mourning and shocked at the loss of one of their own, policeman, friend, coach, husband, father, son. A service of honor the likes the town had never seen. Hundreds of policemen in cruisers, it was an awesome scene. No place to easily hold each one, to show their love and respect, so to the high school they would come, it's what he would like. Mounds of flowers to brighten the day. Of a little, of a little girl, poor Lauren, whose father had been taken away with her since she was born. Honor guards took their places, he was their friend and brother. Pain was on their faces, moved from their vigil and further. The flag draped, coffin, a hero inside, inspiring words were spoken. Tears did not hide. The procession was many miles long, they saluted as we passed by. He was finally on his way home, free to fly. We laid him next to kin, in soil that knew his hand. Death did not win, paid for by the son of man. The flag was folded by him in glove, as 21 guns rang true, presented to this one and only love. He honored the red, white and blue. National Police Week 2015 proclamation. Whereas the Congress of Presidents of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week on which May 15 falls as National Police Week. As citizens of this country, we are extremely proud of this nation's more than 200-year heritage of freedom, and are loyal to the ideals, traditions, and institutions which have made our nation so great. And whereas, we recognize that the obvious dedication of our police officers is indicative of a strong continued desire to pursue our priceless American people, and that the law enforcement officers here in McAllen and Upsher County play an essential role in safeguarding our rights and freedoms. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement officers, and that members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. We recognize that our police officers put their lives on the line every day, and many even lose their lives in, in the performance of their duties as they strive to enforce the laws and protect the citizens of our community. And now therefore, we, the Upsher County Commission, do hereby call upon all of our fellow citizens to join with us as we honor our law enforcement officers in observance of National Police Week, May 11 through 17, 2015. We further call upon all citizens of Upsher County to observe May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, along with lowering our nation's flag in honor of our law enforcement officers. Please to remember courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to this community, or have become disabled in the performance of their duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen humans.
Do you have a motion to approve the signatures for the proclamation as read?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
I have a proclamation that I would ask that you sign. I have proclamations that I would ask that you sign that we will give to each department representative here today as well.